My PD was an um... But never mind. It was...
Good evening, everyone. It is 7:01. We'll get this meeting started. If you would, Madam Clark, take our roll call.
Okay, Ms. Pace Snook, present. Ms. Reclu, Ms. Sebacher, present. Mr. Shiverdecker, Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington.
Here.
And Mr. Braun.
Present.
Six council members present and two absent.
Very good. If you'd join me, Pastor Williamson is here to do our invocation.
Let us pray together. Heavenly Father, we rejoice to give you thanks for the privilege that we have together and be a part of the great work of our community. One of the things that I've been blessed with in my lifetime was to watch this community face its issues and its problems together, to sit down and always let prayerful, reasonable minds prevail. That's one of the trademarks of this community, and for that, I'm grateful, and I speak on behalf of this community to all who lead us and all who are part of the city's life, work, and administration. I thank you, Lord, today that no matter what we face, we face it as a community, and for this, we give you praise. I want to thank you, Lord, for our mayor and council persons, the administrative staff, and all of the folks, Lord, that serve on committees and boards that keep our community strong, united, and working to a greater good. We pray for this session tonight and ask your wisdom and blessings on the discussions already held and those that will be ensuing in this council session. I'm grateful for the community who comes to share. That's what makes us strong together, participation from the community. So guide this session according to your providential will. I pray, Lord, today for all of those who keep us safe, our police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and first responders at every level. I thank you, Lord, for the folks that pick up our trash and work on our streets and our infrastructures and work on our capital improvements everywhere that advances us as your people. I pray tonight for the American soldier, the defender of freedom and liberty, and I pray, Lord, for their health and welfare in times such as these. Guide and direct us now and open our hearts, Lord, that we might love each other through your love. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor.
All right. At this time, we'll move on to comments from visitors. At this time, if you would like to address the council, just step up to the mic and state your name and address, and we'll give you five minutes to speak.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to call Kathy Hochul at this time? She's really not on the agenda, but...
Absolutely.
I can't hear me with this over my mouth, but I am assuming Bill wants me to tell you what the latest sales tax numbers are, which we just got in yesterday. I feel like there should be a drum roll. We are up 3.7%.
All right. Fantastic.
So...
Yep. That's a great news.
Keep our fingers crossed.
And that is year-to-date versus last year?
That's year-to-date, yes. Yes. Same period in the prior year.
I believe we have our police chief here would like to speak for a minute.
I just wanted to say that this Thursday, from 1:00 to 8:00, we're having firearms training simulator down in our training room at the office, and I'd like to invite all of you who want to come. And it's very stressful, and you'll kind of see what we deal with on a daily basis sometimes.
It's Thursday, when from when?
What?
Thursday, what time to what time?
Patrick's going to be there from 1:00 to 8:00.
Entering from the downstairs or upstairs, chief?
Downstairs.
Okay.
On the east side of the building there, down those steps. And I think you'll see that some of the scenarios that he will present is very challenging and very stressful.
Would you like us to RSVP for that?
No.
Just show up?
You might have to wait a little bit if some of the on-duty guys are shooting so we can get them back on the street, but it won't be very long.
What time is shift change? Maybe we can avoid shift change for the officers?
Oh, the shift change is 6:00.
So maybe like an hour before that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Before or after. Sure. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else come forward, we'll move on. Next up, we have approval of the consent agenda. There are no items this evening to approve on that, so we'll just cruise on down to unfinished business. Again, we have no items on that for the agenda tonight for new business. Nikki Fuller is here, Executive Director of Southwestern Power Resources, and she's going to present a little bit of discussion on hydroelectric power.
Yeah, Nikki's with us here today. She drove up from Tulsa. That's where her home office is, and she represents all the customers of hydro power in this region. And I'd like to say Nikki has always been a friend to the city of Fulton. Nikki is... Doesn't matter if you're a large customer or a small customer with allocation, Nikki gets what you need, and she fights for you whichever direction. But she's also testified in front of the U.S. Senate. She is an attorney, and she's going to talk to you about Stockton Lake tonight, which those of you that don't know is slightly northwest of Springfield, Missouri. So with that, we'll have Nikki.
Well, no. You know why Daryl said all those nice things? Because Daryl wrote a few paragraphs here last week, and Nikki responded that, "Daryl, that was very well-written." Just like, "No, don't tell him that."
It was very well-written, and my only complaint, Daryl, is I don't normally tell people I'm an attorney because I find people aren't as nice to me, so you can just forget that piece of information. But thank you, Daryl. I appreciate it, and thank you so much for having me here. I was born and raised in southern Missouri. My sister still lives in Springfield, and I have family in Columbia, so it's nice to have a reason to come here and have an excuse to see my family and see this part of the country, which I do miss greatly being in Tulsa. So thank you so much for the invitation. I'm going to walk a little bit through what is the Southwestern Power Administration and how does it relate to you, and then what is the Southwestern Power Resources Association? I know the names are very similar, but I promise they're different. And then one particular issue that Daryl has been working on specifically because of a call that he got from Senator Hawley's office regarding a proposed water supply reallocation at Stockton Lake. And then if there are any other questions, there are lots more federal hydropower issues that we can discuss. Happy to talk about those as well. So first, we'll talk about what is the Southwestern Power Administration. It is a department of the United States of America under the Department of Energy, so it's a federal entity that markets power from 24 federally-owned, multipurpose hydropower projects owned by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Stockton is one of those that we'll talk about specifically, but there are 23 others in four states in the Midwest that they market from. They also operate about 1,300 miles of high-voltage transmission lines, and they market about 2,000 megawatts of capacity and energy every year. Most importantly, we also like to say, and something that you guys can tout, is that yearly approximately 4.6 million tons of carbon dioxide and several other things are offset by the production of federal hydropower in this area, of which you guys receive 3 megawatts. That's a pretty good feather in your cap for the clean energy that serves Fulton, the city of Fulton and its citizens. So we always like to make sure that you're able to tout that information. This is just a map of all of the locations of the facilities that Southwestern markets from. Those are the black little triangles. The green is their transmission lines that they market from, and then the white is a little hard to see, but that's all the different customers. So you can see there are projects in four states, customers in six states, and transmission in three states. So it's pretty spread out across the Midwest region. So what is the Southwestern Power Resources Association, and how are we different? So I am the head of the Southwestern Power Resources Association. I am not a governmental entity. I'm a not-for-profit trade association. So my job is to advocate for you regarding your federal hydropower and make sure that it stays with you, and it stays safe, and it stays affordable, and it stays reliable. So I work with cities like you and rural electric cooperatives and military bases and state agencies within the footprint of Southwestern Power Administration, so Missouri, Oklahoma, Texas, Kansas, Louisiana, and Arkansas, and I work on behalf of you. So, you know, these are just our strategic objectives. I won't go through them all, but basically, I'm your liaison. I'm your liaison to Congress, to the Department of Energy, to Southwestern, to the Corps, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and any other entity you might need me to talk to. So just a little quick snapshot of who we represent. It's about... The end user is about 9.9 million electric customers in the Midwest. You can see in Missouri and Texas share the largest allocation of hydropower in the Midwest. So per capita, Missouri strongly has more federal hydropower than anywhere else in the Midwest. Again, just in Missouri, nearly 3 million citizens, so nearly a third of Missouri receives federal hydropower. So again, that's a very big resource in this region, about 676 megawatts of energy. So it's a very, very large resource for this part of the country. I'm definitely not going to read all these, but these are just the customers that receive federal hydropower in Missouri. Most notably for you guys would be Central Electric Power Co-op, Central Electric Cooperative, and Fulton, of course, just some of the ones in your region. And I'll have this presentation if you guys want to look at any of those closer, but I definitely don't want to read those to you. So I'm going to turn to something that we do at SPRAW that is a little different than any other interaction with federal agencies than you've seen, and that is we saw in 1999 that there was a need to rehabilitate the core facilities. These hydropower facilities were typically built in the '50s, '60s, the latest of the '70s, and Congress was supposed to appropriate money to ensure that these were well-maintained. But as the years went on, it was very difficult to get appropriations from Congress. So as customers, we stepped up, and we said, "This hydropower is so important to us that we will pay for these rehabilitations, and we are happy to do it." So we started very small with a project called Ozark further south than here, and we have expanded that program. So we've funded over $800 million to date in core rehabilitations, and we've committed to another $1.5 billion over the next 30 years, and that will fully rehabilitate all the core facilities in the SWAPA footprint. So all 24 will be rehabilitated with ongoing funds for maintenance and future work that might be needed. So it's a very unique program. There aren't any... There isn't any other program, and other than the federal hydropower program in the country, that has the customers that pay for this sort of rehabilitation and maintenance. We're very proud of the fact that we do this, costing the taxpayers nothing. So this is a real feather in our cap that we're proud to do and happy to do. As I mentioned, costing the taxpayers nothing, something that is a bit of a misnomer, because the government owns the facilities and markets the power, that there might be some sort of taxpayer involvement, and in fact, that's not true. We pay for everything at these facilities. Not only do we pay above and beyond for these rehabilitations, but we pay for a allocated part that Congress told us we have to pay for. So at Stockton in particular, we pay 50% of all of the joint-use costs. So every cost that's utilized by any user of the dam, we pay 50% of that because it was built 50% for hydropower. So that's how Congress determined what the number was. That's what we pay there. So we pay the cost of building the project, any maintenance costs. We pay operations and maintenance. We also pay construction. And if you'll recall, back in the '50s, '60s, and '70s, interest rates were not as good as they are now. And we've tried to refinance our loans on these projects, and we've not been allowed to because the Treasury has determined that that's taking money away from the Treasury because you'd be sending less money in. So we paid around an average of 9% interest on these investments, and we're not allowed to get out of that interest rate. So it is a really large revenue maker for the federal government. So all these costs are recovered for federal hydropower through swapas rates for energy and capacity. So again, this costs the taxpayers absolutely nothing, but because this is a wholesale-cost, not-for-profit-based program, it's still a very cheap source of energy. So for you guys, not only do you get something clean and renewable, it's also a low-cost resource, particularly in good water years, which we've had recently. So we're going to talk specifically about Stockton Dam rehabilitation. This is one of the projects that we did under this program I was just telling you about, the rehabilitation. In 2009, SPRAW got a call that they had a massive failure at Stockton. A blade fell off, and they needed emergency money to get it running again. We immediately provided the funding, which was combined with some congressional appropriations, which we pay back through our rate mechanism, and the total rehab cost was around $50 million in total, so quite a bit of money. We overhauled all the assets, and we made the decision to uprate and upgrade the turbines so that they're more efficient. We can make more energy with less water, better utilizing the existing conditions there. This year, we were asked by the Corps for an additional $3 million to repair some 480 switchgear at the facility. So there's still ongoing work at Stockton that we are continuing to be asked by the Corps to fund, which is why this particular water reallocation request at Stockton Lake has been a hard pill for us to swallow and one of the reasons I was working with Daryl this week regarding this reallocation. There was a request for water supply, which is drinking water, just to be clear, from Tri-State Water Resource Coalition at Stockton Lake. Now, I've been accused of getting way too far in the details on this, and I can go as far down as you want to go, but I will try to keep it high-level. If I'm getting too in the weeds, please shout at me, and I'll pull it back. But essentially, the Corps has the ability to reallocate storage for drinking water under the Water Supply Act of 1958. Congress said, "We know cities need water. You can reallocate storage for water as long as it does not," and these are the key words, "seriously affect any other authorized purposes of the dam." So like hydropower, or navigation, or wildlife restoration, any of the congressionally-authorized purposes, but cannot seriously affect that. So in this... In this water supply request, there is a reallocation of around nearly 100,000 acre-feet of storage, which I'll talk about in a minute, how much that is and how it relates to the "seriously affects" test. And this is... Comes out of... Part of this comes out of the multipurpose pool, also called the conservation pool. That's the pool of water that the multiple users of the water use, the multipurpose pool. All the purposes use that pool. So it comes out of that pool that we all use. So these are the members of the Tri-State Water Resource Coalition of note. Some of those are also on my board. So, you know, I don't want to villainize any of these people, and I think everybody understands that we need water for people to drink, so I want to be very clear about that. But you can see it's a lot of cities, particularly in southwest Missouri, and there also is a private water company, Missouri American Water Company, on there as well. So when the Corps real allocates storage out of the multipurpose pool, they are obligated by law to compensate us for that loss because it is in loss. When water comes out of that, the Southwestern Power Administration is still required by contract and by statute to provide the power to the customers, to you guys. So they go out and buy that power at a higher cost than what they could have generated at because, remember, it's a very low-cost resource. So they have to go buy that power, and then they incorporate that more expensive power into their rates, and they fulfill your contractual and statutory obligations. So right now, one of our biggest concerns is that we believe the Corps undervalues the compensation that is owed to the hydropower purpose. It does not take into consideration the cost of replacement power. Essentially, the Corps says that hydropower should be used or should be compensated as if it was used over an 18-hour period. But hydropower, for you guys, is used over a very short window. When prices are the most expensive, that's when you use your lowest-cost resource. So to buy power to be used on this high-cost timeframe costs a lot more money. So we feel that they undervalue the replacement power that we will have to purchase to fulfill the contracts. In fact, the Southwestern Power Administration just ran their study, and they believe the Corps undervalued... Well, what the compensation should be is seven times what the compensation they determined that it was. So that's our biggest concern, is we are not being compensated appropriately for this taking. I'm going back to the Brightline Rule where I talked about... Or where I talked about the Water Supply Act. It could only... You could only take water if it doesn't seriously affect authorized purposes. Historically, the Corps implementing guidance stated that seriously effect was the lesser of 15% of the multipurpose pool or 50,000 acre-feet of storage. In 1993, a reallocation occurred for 50,000 acre-feet of storage. So we were led to believe that no more allocations would occur out of Stockton when we decided to rehabilitate that plant to the tune of $50 million. Then, after a still-pending Supreme Court case was filed regarding a water supply request like this in the southeast, you may have heard of the Florida, Georgia, Alabama water wars. This is a component of that piece in the Supreme Court. The Corps has appeared to abandon its own implementing guidance on this Brightline Rule. Instead, the Corps has decided to determine a storage reallocation seriously affects a purpose on a project-by-project basis. We don't know what this threshold is. It's not consistent among district or division, or even among personnel within the same project. So as you can imagine, that's extremely frustrating when you're trying to run a cost-benefit analysis on whether you should do another rehabilitation or provide more money for a project. So that's a big concern for us as well. So this just sort of goes through our concerns. I won't read through all of them specifically, but as you can see, this combined with the 1993 reallocation will constitute a loss of 30% of the multipurpose pool at Stockton. So we feel that that seriously affects the hydropower purpose. I certainly wouldn't want my salary to be reduced by 30%. So I wouldn't... I don't want my pool to be reduced by 30% as well. And then, when the study was done in 1993, the Corps had concluded that the smaller reallocation did cause a dependable capacity reduction and did seriously affect, and we were compensated appropriately for that taking. So they've changed the methodology between '93 and 2020 on the same project, for the same purpose, with the same reallocation, with no reasoning for why this all changed. We talked about the reinvestment in the facility. We talked about the Corps doesn't value the replacement cost appropriately. And then the final one is that the energy produced from Stockton hydropower goes solely for not-for-profit entities. Only cities, co-ops, and military bases get to receive this power, but this water is also going to a private entity, which will then sell it for profit. So that's a huge concern for us as well. And that's all I have to say about Stockton. Just to give you kind of a wrap-up on the things that have occurred, the comment period for this reallocation closed this Monday. The 10th, we submitted comments. Fulton submitted comments. Several other cities in Missouri submitted comments. Again, we were... You were contacted. I was not contacted by Senator Hawley regarding this. I'm not sure why this popped up on his radar. Because this is a core issue, we don't typically involve the senators. So you may hear more about it. I'm not sure, but you were contacted, and that's how this kind of... This ball started rolling with Fulton in particular. Are there any questions about that or anything else related to federal hydropower?
So, basic question. If this goes through, as stated, Fulton will see a marked increase in electric rates?
You could. So the general rule is a million-dollar increase is about a 1% rate increase for the Southwestern Power Administration. So we're looking at about a $1.75 million cost from SWAPA's perspective, so it would cause a rate increase pressure of about 1.75%. There could be some rate decreases with lower interest rates that might be able to offset that for a time being. And the power repayment study that the government does, they take into effect a lot of things, including interest on new projects that they put into the system. So, long story short, you will see an increase, but you may not see it for a while because interest rates are low right now.
But it's also a capacity factor decrease?
Yes. You do lose capacity at Stockton as well.
Okay.
What's our contract obligation with this power? Are we locked into a 20-year...
So you receive your allocation in perpetuity. You have it forever based on an administrative act that happened in 1980 called the SWAPA Final Power Allocation. Your contract is a 15-year term that I think is up in about five years. Is that right? You also have the ability to terminate your contract at any time if there's a rate increase. So there is an out if there is a rate increase. Again, this still is a very, very cheap source of power, but my job is to keep it as cheap as possible. So that's really why we're here, fighting for every drop of water.
I cannot imagine us doing anything to want to get out of this contract. In fact, earlier today in my office, I was like, "How can we pick up more?" And it's... There's lots of people in line in front of us to get an additional allocation, so we won't get more.
Do we know what it's... I mean, obviously, I think you probably do. Thank you very much for telling me it was 3 megawatts is what we get.
Yes.
I had that as a note of a question that I wanted to ask, but secondly, what is the megawatt-hour cost at this point?
Well, it depends on what the water looks like for the year. I believe this year, we're sitting at around $25 or $26 for the integrated customers. Is that right, Daryl? Yep. So $25, $26.
Thank you.
And that's for peak. So... And it combines also your supplemental. So that's a... Given the time of day, it's a very market-competitive price.
But if Stockton can't provide the megawatts, you have to go on the open market, and you don't charge us the $25 and then absorb the open-market price, you charge us the open-market price, right?
Well, it's combined into all of the costs, and that's where you might see the rate increase. That's what SWAPA had... The $1.75 million is the cost they anticipate it will take to replace the power with open-market power or bilateral agreements with one of their partners.
Okay.
That's about the third time I've heard most of this spiel, and earlier, we were talking about like an example that she kind of liked, and it's been massaged a little bit, but they want to take the top two feet of water off the lake. Yeah. And that's like 30% of the water that's available for electric generation. So the example I threw out to her was, so that's like, if I want to go in and buy a dozen donuts, okay? I go in and I buy a dozen donuts, but I only walk out with eight. But I still paid for a dozen. I just don't have access, nor do I get the benefit of those additional four donuts. That's my story. Don't take it apart.
I thought it was a great analogy, and I'm not nearly craving enough to come up with that, so I thought it was a fantastic one.
Are there any other things that City of Fulton could do? Pass a resolution, contact our congressman, things like that?
You did contact your congressman, which was very helpful. And you filed comments, which were helpful, very, very helpful. Pat, since the comment period is ended, we're just sort of waiting on what the Corps is going to do next. That's what our next steps are. We do have a board meeting in September. At that meeting, we will determine whether we are going to approve the $3 million request at Stockton. Of course, I can never anticipate what my board will do. But I think that will be a very difficult decision for them to make given this reallocation that's pending right now.
We appreciate you fighting a good fight there.
This is her, this is her first time out of Tulsa since March, so.
It is. It feels very strange. I don't know what to do with myself. Thank you again very much for the invitation. I know that was a very number intense and I'm sorry. I apologize for that. But I'm happy to help you guys however I can to help defend your federal hydropower. So, thank you very much.
Could we get the PowerPoint, Courtney? Could we get the PowerPoint?
I will, as soon as I get it, I will make sure you.
Thank you.
Darryl's got it. Darryl will get it out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move on to smart grid update. And I'm assuming, Darryl, we want to talk about this.
Okay, we've been messing with smart grid, seems like, forever. To give you a recap of what's happened, I guess, in the last year, year and a half. The smart grid system did crash early last year and we had to rebuild the servers. When that happened, we lost connection to billing. So, that was a time that Kathy and I, and I think Bill met a little bit. And it was like, do we want to spend the money to re-establish connection with a billing system that's going away? Because we just got the smart grid part back up. Or are we going to wait till we get a new billing system? Well, we wait till we got the new billing system, which I think was probably the smart move. And now, we've had problems getting the passwords or permissions from the new vendor. Kathy's been working on that for several weeks to a couple of months, probably basically before COVID started. And I guess about a week ago, Bill stepped in and we called and Bill did what Bill does. And within about, I want to say 48 hours, we had the passwords. So, now, another vendor that we use for the outage management system is writing the script. Now, he's got the passwords to bring that billing information over. So, Kyle's GIS system will work and our outage will work and our billing, we can get back on it. During this time, we probably got about 400 meters. Is that what Miller told you? About 400 electric meters that probably need changed. They've lost communication. It might just be the module, maybe the whole meter. But we haven't went out and changed those to work with the smart grid because if that meter had moved in the last 18 months, there wasn't any reason to go look at it yet. Now, billing's still correct. Don't misunderstand, think we don't know where our meters are. Billy knows where they're at, but the smart grid computer don't know where they're at because it lost its connection with billing. And I think Miller was working with the contractor this afternoon. And they think that they will have that update to where that bridge is built back, probably by the first part of next week. So, hopefully, after that, we'll have a better idea of where we're at. And Bill, unless you want to add something else, that's kind of where we're at.
No, we just, it's been, it's been a long process and we, you know, take two steps forward, one step back. And it's time we, it's time to take a few steps forward again.
Does it seem like this will always be a moving target where we have pieces that don't fit together all the time?
Well, one of the things was that old billing system, you know, that was one of the legacy pieces that we had that we didn't buy with the new system. So, I think there's always been a struggle making it work with Springbrook. Hopefully, this new system that other people has used with smart grid, I'm hoping we'll get rid of some of those issues. And before it crashed last year, Kathy was starting to use it quite a bit. And then, it started, she noticed a decrease in output on how many meters was coming across. Then shortly after that's when it crashed.
So, the meters that are not talking to the system, you're saying is not a meter problem, it's an interface problem?
Well, there's two parts to each meter. There's the meter and then there's the module.
The power communications thing, yeah.
That talks. And right now, all we can say is we got 400 meters that aren't wanting to talk.
Okay.
Now, why they're not wanting to talk. I mean, we're still, the meter is still functioning because we're still reading it. And we feel that a lot of it's going to be the module. And on our stock that we've got, we've got a lot of modules on hand. It's just a matter of going back in the field and changing them.
What kind of total dollars have we spent on this smart grid?
If you don't count labor.
Well, I think, yeah, okay, go ahead.
If you don't count, if you're just talking equipment and stuff like that, almost $3 million since 2010.
Which half of that was grant? Kind of.
The thing that gave us a problem, John, and you weren't on the council then, is the whole stimulus package on the smart grid was try to get the investments out into the system. And where you would have usually got a version two or version three system, it was rushed to market and we got a version one. And that's, that's one of the reasons we got the grant, was the federal government wanted smart grid brought on out and unveiled. So, there was, there was some products that weren't prime-time ready that was pushed to prime-time.
Thank you, Darryl.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Moving on, we'll hear a little bit about the CARES Act reimbursement.
I'm going to ask Kathy to come up and help me with this. You know, we're, you guys gave an extension and I think the mayor authorized a little bit more extension like through tonight. But we've, we've gone past another cutoff date. I'm going to let Kathy talk about where we are and find out from the city council where you want to go.
We originally had shut off scheduled for last Thursday. We took a long, hard look at what kind of reimbursements had been made through the COVID CARES Act through CMCA. I was shocked when the numbers came out that we have had 44 customers who have received about $45,000. I believe we've done everything we can to encourage people. Everyone who calls worried about shut-offs, you know, we tell them to contact CMCA. I do think it was somewhat complicated by the fact that they have been closed for a couple of weeks. They had a COVID issue. So, the only way that you can get an application in Columbia is to mail it to them. And I do believe that has slowed down their processing.
Kathy, remind us, we're like 240 customers is what is at risk right now?
When I sent out the letters to individuals who were past due, we sent out 421 letters.
421, thank you.
And only 44 have used that?
Yes, have received COVID money. Now, we've had a lot of money coming in. I don't know how many people are past due currently. Friday, Monday will be very busy. It's the 14th and then the 17th will be like the 15th. But we need to decide what we're going to do about shut-offs. Or perhaps I should say, you need to decide.
Yeah, we've talked about this internally half a dozen times. And we believe that a lot of people are not going to ask and is not going to hit their radar that they have a utility bill to pay until they're disconnected. And then, it's going to hit them hard that they have to pay a bill. So, I'm looking, I'm looking for the city council authorization to extend the, extend the time period where we don't shut them off or to shut them off. One thing, and I'm not, I'm, just like some suggestions. Maybe we wait until the 17th or 18th or whatever, 19th to do shut-offs. But then, when people come in, we say, you need to go here. You need to do this. And then waive the reconnect fees or something like that so that the CMC doesn't have to pay that. But, you know, for them to go, they're going to have to, you know, with CMCA still being shut down? I think they're shut down until next Thursday.
They're taking appointments, Mr. Johnson. Anybody who wishes to fill out an application can call, leave a message.
Oh, okay, that's.
And then, they'll come in and do a specific appointment for that person.
Do you know how long it's taking to get an appointment?
It, next day, from what I understand. But that, that information is about a week old. The last time I spoke with the representative of CMCA.
And I'm sure that's dependent on how many people call.
Yes.
I thought I read an email today that the phase one and two of the CARES applications are stopped.
We have, we have talked to Gary. And I am under the impression, and I can confirm this with Gary Youngerman, Commissioner, that, you know, they gave CMCA some money to use to pay these bills. And he seemed receptive to letting them hang on to this money to see if we could get more of it used. But yes, the program was supposed to end at the end of July. But Gary is, right? Pretty much, pretty much indicating he's willing to.
He was very easy to work with.
Kathy?
Let it go on a while.
If we treated August as a usual month, can you walk us through the dates, the dates that would significantly impact our utility customers? If August was a usual cycle month?
If it were typical.
If it were typical?
If it were typical, we would have had an arrangement shut off around the 6th or 7th of August. And that is for people who do not pay by the 15th of the prior month. But contact us and say, I work for someone. I don't get paid till the 31st and you have shut-off scheduled for the 29th. I'd like to make an arrangement to pay late.
Okay.
So, then, you know, typically, that day is within the 5th to the 7th. That arrangement shut-off would have happened at that time. Then, the normal shut-off would be towards the end of the month. Maybe the 29th, 30th of August.
Due date of August and then the 29th and 30th.
Yeah. Maybe a day or two late because the 15th is on the weekend. So, it's going to be, Monday will become the due date and then we'll be a couple of days behind getting past due notices.
So, if we wanted, go ahead.
No.
Oh, I was just going to say, so if we wanted to think a typical calendar, then we could look at those that do not bring themselves whole by the 15th or 17th of August. And then, they would receive notice of shut-off of the 29th or 30th and then would have opportunity to make arrangements through the first week of September.
Yes, but I will tell you that the majority of our past due customers have been dreading shut-off for the last week because they're all aware that Thursday was scheduled to be shut-off day. Our phone has rang off the hook. And, you know, we've just told everyone that we were going to talk to the council this evening and would know more after that.
Basically, the warning's already been.
Yeah, they know.
So, we.
So, you're, you're saying approximately 360?
I don't, I don't know right now.
Okay. But it's in the hundreds.
I don't know that.
Oh, okay.
I don't know that.
It, you know, and as I said before, it is not our goal to shut anybody off.
Oh, I agree.
It is our goal to encourage people to go and make use of these financial resources. But we've, you know, Helen, the newspaper's been very receptive to putting it in the newspaper and giving us a plug here and there. But we're just, we, and we're just.
How far do we go?
Not being very good at getting the word out or people aren't listening or they're not hearing or they're not believing or understanding. But at some point, this is going to, we're going to have to move on.
The reality check hasn't caught there yet.
And I will tell you, we have collected a lot of money. We've been very busy. You know, the threat of shut-off has brought a lot of people in to either make a payment or to make arrangements on a contract or whatever. But we still have past due customers.
Do I remember in the, in the CARES Act money, did they have to be, I mean, not current, but did they have to be active? Was it non-valid after they've been shut off or not?
We haven't, we haven't shut anybody off.
No, and that's what I'm saying is if we shut them off, would they still be eligible?
I don't know that there's a caveat like that, John.
I believe, the conversations I've had with the CMCA around this, this issue, I believe they would still be eligible. It is utility assistance in whatever form that they need, so.
For the set time period that was out there.
And I can tell you that there are quite a few of our customers who had bills that covered months that they've paid in full.
Have the late fees been accruing as well?
We did not start charging penalties until last month.
Okay.
Until in July. Because if you remember, we waived that from March, April, May, and June. And then, we also waived the credit card surcharge.
Perfect. Are we still waiving that as well?
Um, no, we've reinstated that.
All of those things are reinstated, I believe, July 15th when the emergency order expired. Gotcha, thank you.
And so, really, if we, if we just let you proceed as you have for the last few weeks in anticipation of this shut-off, then we'd be looking at customers being shut off this week?
Yes.
But you've had a lot of response from the citizens in terms of that?
Wanting to know. It's shut-off day tomorrow.
Well, I believe that we should, I believe that we should really, those people that are, realize that they're going to be cut off. They either have to make it, do an action. They either have to apply for the assistance and we're going to give you this many days to apply for the assistance. We won't cut it off until this certain date. And if you don't follow up and get an application, you know, what more can you do?
Well, I'm thinking they're going to be without power for a night or two.
Yeah, I think the word is out there that, you know, shut-off day was to be last Thursday. I think, I think the majority of our past due customers are aware of that.
I mean, I don't see us going out to shut them off to get their attention and then turn it right back on and saying, go apply for some funds.
Right. Sounds like plenty more.
Could we do an incentive? And, and, and my mind goes 100 miles an hour. But could we do an incentive where they would not be charged a reconnect fee if they went to CMCA? That we would not bill them for the reconnect fee after they've been shut off? We still collect our, we still get our dollars, but yet, they're not incurring extra costs for the reconnect?
Right now, we can't get them to go for, to get the bill. So, I don't know if waiving reconnect would be any incentive.
At least it could send them to go talk to CMCA.
To make sure I understand, you are saying, let's assume that we disconnect services to a citizen. Currently, they cannot have their power reinstated until they satisfy their bill in full.
Correct.
And pay a recon, or service fee of $50. So, are you suggesting we not restore their service until they go to CMA, CMCA and get a pledge?
Well, I guess if they got their money, if they, if they had the, on an average, because if we had 44 customers that took up $45,000, we're saying $1,000 per customer average. Look at that. But then, just not the reconnect fee that we would normally charge, Kathy. Not necessarily, I, I don't know. Is that an incentive for them to?
I don't know.
But wouldn't that?
I mean, I like lights. I like my refrigerator to work. I love my air conditioner. That's enough incentive for me.
Wouldn't that be a disadvantage for the customer who is able to pay their bill in full on their own rather than going to CMCA? If I can pay my bill off, I don't get that $50 waived just because I'm paying it myself?
That's, that's a great point.
Be a little unfair.
I think they're going to meet the criteria. And I just, I just contacted Gary Youngerman. Even if we shut them off and see if, if they continue to meet CMCA requirements, that CMCA money will be available.
I know we have always strived to be extremely fair. We do not treat one citizen any differently than the other.
That's good.
So, you know, it doesn't make any difference who you are or whatever. The same rules apply across the board. So, I think we do need to be careful about offering a certain. segment of our citizens a benefit that we don't offer at all.
So let's go back to the original kind of suggested process of going with the 17th, 18th, 19th, something in that range to get past your, you know, 15th crazy day, whatever, and making that the shut off day, and then let the chips, or let the chips fall where they may?
Well, the shut off day would be about the 25th to 27th.
No, ordinarily, but we've missed a shut off, so at that point, we could do anything.
I think what I heard was just, let's turn August into a real month and run, play it by the rule. Is that what, is that what I heard?
I mean, that was one option.
That was one suggestion of that.
And being, being a real.
I didn't hear that.
Talk with this one. And being a real month means that people would get shut off?
They would have already been shut off.
They would have already been shut off.
They would already?
Well, so they're already almost occurring a full another month or better of a bill.
And they've received all of that communication, and really what we're looking at is, is a shut off of this Thursday. I mean, that, it, it sounds like you've done all the communication for the month of July. All of the delinquent accounts. Everybody that is going to respond has responded, at least until now. And you're really just looking for us to, to do what we've said we were gonna do. I mean, that's, your department has already done all of this for weeks, correct? I mean, you, you've worked with customers for weeks, getting them ready for what would have been a shut off last Thursday. And, and we just kind of pushed it until this meeting for us to have this conversation. And really where we're at is to, to follow through with everything we've asked you to do for the last three or four weeks.
We're looking for direction.
And make this Thursday a cut, a shut off.
Do we have the CMCA application here for customers that can, we don't have it here?
No, CMCA gives it out.
Okay, will they?
We, we have never given out an application.
I mean, will they be interested in leaving applications for people that?
Well, they did, did not offer that, and I talked to them about it.
They're offering many, many services right now for that. They're, they're making themselves very available to the customers.
They want the customer to contact them directly.
Okay, okay.
And part of what happened when that happened, Councilman Washington, was we wanted to be removed from any, any yes or no decision on it and put it in a third party. So it went to a third party.
The county made the agreement with CMCA to process those applications.
We made a decision on who gets assistance and who doesn't.
I understand that, but what I'm saying, the application, now put it in this person's hand and say, hey, this is your application, you go turn it in. Having that application available, that's what I'm looking at.
We've never done that.
Okay, never done, no, okay.
And they've never, they've never advocated that in discussions.
Okay.
So.
My understanding is a very fast process once they walk in the door and sit down with CMCA representative.
And there's also, just as an aside, there's also salvation money, army money out there too, which the staff is quick to mention. You know, if for some reason you do not meet the income guidelines of CMCA,
Right.
you can contact SERV, and they are handling this salvation army money.
Excellent, so I would entertain a motion if, if someone feels that, that that's appropriate.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we have, that the city of Fulton treats this August as a normal month in terms of shut offs for utilities. Is that a normal month?
We almost need to just put a date on it, right, isn't that what you're asking?
But we can't do that because she's already passed a deadline for this.
For the, for the conference.
Yeah, we've counted.
For the arrangements.
Okay, well, do we have a, do we have a second on that motion, or does that motion die? Is anyone offering a second?
Hey, no one wants them.
Prior, prior to us getting a second, do we get one? What, what's, what motion, what motion would, would work for us?
I think the best thing we could do is if, if someone on the council would make a motion that says, I make a motion that we do shut offs on a certain date. Either the end of this week, the end of the month, whatever. But I think when you say we're treated like a normal month, well, that can go either way.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to be more specific.
All right, then I'll make the motion that for the month, for shut offs, we begin shut offs, I don't have a calendar, but the last week of the month.
So Monday is the 31st. That's the last calendar.
Then I would say the week before that.
24th through the 28th?
Yes.
What day?
We have to allow so many days depending on when we get out the past due notices, if you're gonna do that, if you want it the end of the month. Sorry.
I know, I've talked your mind off.
We'll have to see when we get the past due notices out, because there has to be so much time after that.
So.
Sometime approximately 24th.
I think that's too early, but sometime between then and the end of the month.
Perfect.
How's that?
Perfect.
Yes.
Yes, that's fine.
Between 24th, the end of the month, not before the 24th.
Okay.
To be determined by.
Finance.
Finance department.
Okay.
Clear as mud?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Courtney, do we have a motion?
We do, I'm still working on it. All right, so Councilwoman Simmons, your motion was to have shut offs approximately the 24th through the end of the month at the discretion of the finance department, based on when you can get your notices out. Does that sound correct, everybody?
That's good.
And when I can do billing. It's a fine line.
Can you give us a heads up on when you make that determination?
Probably not a lot of lead time.
It's okay.
So, but everybody that's.
I'll let Bill know and then.
There's a, there's a pretty good chance, because we got an accounting on 25th, so.
But everybody that's already got a disconnect is now stood until the 24th or something thereafter of August.
Yes, yeah. Because we only send disconnect notices or past due notices, excuse me, out once a month.
Right.
After the 15th.
And if we're looking at the 24th, that gives the paper at least.
Time to put it in there.
Into the hard copy, hopefully, please.
Digital copy.
Well, and the hard copy, we get the hard copies on Saturday.
So the new shut off day would be, new shut off time would be the 24th through the end of the month?
For this, this month.
This month only, yeah.
And then we would go back to our.
And then they'll go back to normal.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Any more discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And oppose no. Very good, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, moving on, we'll talk about fireworks again, that was our work session tonight. We did hear from the fire chief and the chief of police. Their recommendation was to go back to sort of the way we had it before years ago, and just to stop all the fireworks together, no sales or shooting of fireworks in the city limits. So we had, it's a pretty lengthy discussion on that, and the, the thought process, process is that we, we still have a lot of time between now and next year. And I think we'll, we'll continue talking about this. And we do have a lot of concerned citizens, obviously. With the video that, that we all saw, it was quite disturbing. And I don't think any of us realized quite the extent of what's been going on down there the last couple of years at Carver Park. So we, we just had to figure this out, but, but again, we do have time to do that. And if, if you would, police chief and fire chief, kind of come up and just reiterate what, what you said before to the folks that are now viewing.
I think our recommendation is to ban fireworks, ban sale of fireworks, and ban possession of fireworks within the city limits of Fulton.
And some of the discussion we had on that was the enforcement part of it. And, you know, I, I think it gives, correct me if I'm wrong, but this gives you guys a little bit of a line, more of a line in the sand to draw that, that you don't have to sort of pick and choose and try to figure out which mortar's big enough, which one's not. They're just all not allowed, is that correct?
I might add that when we had the old ordinance, we would have several 50 gallon barrels full of fireworks we confiscated. And the, throughout the, the time period, we'd just fill those up with water. So we can do that again.
So the Class C fireworks, are those what you normally see inside the tents being sold?
I, I don't know the class.
That's the consumer stuff.
That's most of them that I've seen when we go with the fire marshal's office to do the inspection of the tents. We don't inspect the fireworks itself, but we do inspect the tents and make sure they're complying with all the regulations as far as running the operation.
But when we talk about banning fireworks, we're talking about pretty much everything, except sparklers, I guess, right?
Everything.
Yeah. Okay.
And can you kind of describe what that was like? I know you remember it well, when, when that code was in, in place.
I can tell you when that code was in place, it was nothing like it was today, I mean, of this last couple of years. I spent many years there at the fire station on Westminster, and I've, I've never seen anything like that before.
So what would be the difference if we banned altogether and we still had the same group of people show up to have a fireworks war? If we can't, if we can't enforce what we currently have as an ordinance, what would be the difference if it's banned altogether when they show up in the same numbers? If we can't enforce that?
I think they would go someplace, but I don't think they would come to full.
I just, I just.
Because of Columbia, they, they quit going to Columbia, then the county had them one year, they quit, they quit going to the county when they banned, banned them there.
And also, parks are off limits too, anyway. Our city parks shouldn't have fireworks displays, you know, anything like that, isn't that right?
Yeah, they're already banned from parks.
Well.
Supposedly, yeah.
So, so that way, that, we can enforce that.
But if they're banned and the PD stops them on a traffic stop, they'll be able to take those fireworks at that point.
Gotcha, okay.
Right.
If they're not, they'll just let them go with the fireworks.
But it sounds like there were a lot of places other than just the park, right?
Majority, the majority was in the park.
Right, the ma, majority, but, yeah.
Yeah, the majority were, I had them over by my house, you know, so, yeah, they were everywhere, but.
So just as a point of clarification, if, if we go down the path of banning all the fireworks, will you all allow yourself the ability to do your fireworks?
To do what?
Since you do your display each year?
That's a good point.
Well, that's permitted by the city council.
Yeah, but that's a license.
Unless it's approved by the city council.
Yeah.
So would everyone else, but not the city council, you would approve your own fireworks show?
We.
That's how we had it before.
And we would approve, if I'm not mistaken, the way the ordinance was written before, we, we would potentially approve any licensed, permitted professional show.
If they were shot professionally, yes.
Right.
But that's what I remember, yes.
Not, not just the city council or the country club. It could be done by anyone that had the proper permits, the proper profession, you know, pros doing it. In a safe location, that type of thing. We just, we just don't enforce the rest of it.
That, you're correct, that, that is already in the ordinance, they do have to be done professionally.
So again, we've got, you know, we've got time, I'm super excited that we're talking about it now, appreciate your guys' input. And we'll, we'll keep chewing on this a little bit, I think. And maybe give it, give it another couple of months and bring it back, and we'll talk about it again and see where we're at. Does that make sense?
Well, that was gonna be my question, is how long do we wanna chew on it?
Right.
So, yeah, a couple of months.
Before the end of the year.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Excellent, so citizens, we, we are listening, we, we do wanna protect our neighborhoods. And, you know, it's a sacrifice, I love kids having fun, but, but what we saw can't keep happening, so. Appreciate your guys' input again, and we'll, we'll work towards a solution. All right, moving on. Have council concerns, I'll start to my left, Councilwoman Sebacher?
I have nothing, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Simmons?
I have nothing.
Uh, Councilman Stone?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Braun?
Of course.
Here we go.
I just, I wanna come back to, I, I appreciate your, your small updates you've been giving us for the COVID-19 slash ordinance. But I don't wanna, I don't want to keep dragging something on and making somebody think we're going to do something or not going to do something, and then, and then just stop. So I just look at a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, and I have, first off, the kids that are coming back to school at Westminster and William Woods, and the people that are coming in for an outage, those people, a lot of them don't live in our city and state. How are, how is the county planning on tracking those? So if I understand it correctly, their, their tracking information will go back to the county from where their driver's license is. Am I, am I mistaken on that?
I believe you're correct.
So we won't ever know what those cases are?
I think, I think possibly with the students, because they're here for an extended period of time. Because even like the students, they're counted here in the census. But I, I would, I am pretty confident that the workers at the plant for the outage, that will go back to their home county.
And I can tell you that they're, they're going to testing them coming in.
Our county, our health department would probably never know.
Okay, so then the other thing that I really, I just wanna point this out, back when we first started talking about this, July 22nd, we had 24 active cases, today, we have 51. You know, we haven't had a discussion anywhere about what that threshold is. And I don't have a clue what it is, what, what that number should be to move forward, to act in ordinance. But I certainly think that we need to have a plan in place if we get to that point. That's my concern.
Well, Courtney, the mayor and I have been looking at, we've kind of narrowed down to basically three, in my opinion, as a model. It's three that are in the MML website. Springfield's, which is, it's a about 10 or 11 page long document. But it, it works off of the, we wanna educate and inform perspective first, and it's, and it's very detailed. And then we have Columbia's, which is five to six pages long with details on, you know, restaurants and where you're gonna be for athletic events and that type of thing. And then we actually have the St. Louis County Health Departments, which is a page. It says you're gonna wear a mask. So when it comes time to, for us to maybe take that next step, there's gonna be some input necessary from the city council on, are you looking for one page, five pages, or 10 pages?
Well, and I think that's, and I believe I mentioned at last meeting was, maybe getting Mr. Riley involved would be great. And, and I don't know, can you tell, has that happened at all?
Well, until we, until we know what we're gonna do, no, we haven't talked to him.
And we've also been contacted by one of the highest ranking health officials in the state of Missouri that would like to work with us to create a tailor-made ordinance to our city. So that's in the works, that's happening next week, early next week. We're gonna meet and talk about that along with our county health department. And, you know, if this, if. And, you know, if this, if the council, if I get inkling of any kind from the council that they want to put a mask ordinance in someplace, we could have one done pretty quickly.
I, I would like to see a plan in place. I'm not saying that we need to put it out there, but I'd rather be proactive as to be reactive.
And I think we have been. I think we are being proactive. You know, we've been working with this quite a bit, even though it may not seem like it.
Yeah, a month, a little bit over a month.
I need to comment on this, but.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, no, it's, it's to kind of support what you're saying.
No, I'm saying, I.
What did you say, 51?
51.
Where are they? We don't know that. The health department should know that. But should Fulton be going alone to enact an ordinance to wear masks where we really don't know where all these infections, I guess you could say, these active cases are? Hope, you know, hopefully is the wrong word. There, there might be a lot in the city limits of Fulton, but shouldn't we have some help from the county?
Absolutely.
I mean, it sounds like we're going this alone and.
Yeah, we are. And that's.
That doesn't seem right.
Yeah, I hear you, Ballard.
That's my point.
Yeah, I hear you. I can't speak for the county, but, you know, that's, they have a job to do and, and, yeah.
And the one thing, you know, the, the comment I'll make on it is no different than what we've been talking about for the past hour and a half with fireworks, is what, what will be the level of enforcement should we choose to adopt any ordinance language?
That's correct.
All three of the examples you gave, Mr. Johnson, I looked up this afternoon after you mentioned them, they are all enforceable by their health departments, whether it be their city health department or the county health department. It is the health department that enforces that ordinance on the businesses. It's, it's not police officers enforcing it on individuals. It is the health departments enforcing fines and, and citations onto the businesses. And we have already been told by the county health department that we, that they do not have the resources to allocate any enforcement on any ordinance, no matter what language we choose to adopt within the city limits. So, unless we, I mean, we're, we're going to have to go all the way to the end of anything that we adopt of, and what resources are we going to put towards enforcement? And where, what does that enforcement look like? We, we made comments over and over, we didn't want the businesses to be the bad guys, but that's, that's where it ends up. So, I mean, it's, it is a very tough position for us to be in. But it is, a lot of what we've seen other places, we're not going to be able to adopt boilerplate.
I would agree 100% with that, Jeff. And there's also a great time for CARES Act money to be used for some of that, which is what it was designed for exactly. I mean, I've heard the governor say it, and I've heard the director of the state say the same thing. Use the CARES Act money for some of those issues. So, I, I think the money is available if we choose, if, well, and see, we don't have that authorization to use because it's coming from the county.
Right.
That's the issue.
And they, they've made their templates of how they're going to allocate that money.
Correct.
And how they've already done it, so.
So, I'm sorry for being so long and lengthy on it. I, I just think that.
It's on everybody's mind, John.
I appreciate it and, and.
Yep.
I will keep on it.
You, you folks talk to the county. You, sorry. You folks talk to the county. I mean, that's, that was a statement, not a question. We need their help in this. It, I mean, more people transit through Kingdom City than live in Fulton on a daily basis. So, you know, the county's got to be involved in this somehow.
Yeah, they've said they don't want to be involved.
I know that, I hear you. And I heard them too. So, we, I mean, we can issue an ordinance to say you got to wear a mask. And we can go it alone. But I think we need the county, because where are these 51 people? They know.
Yeah, I can give you Kent Wood's number. That, I don't know what to tell you other than that, Ballard. I mean, we, we, we can't make them do, do what you want them to do, so. I mean, I know it's frustrating.
Well, is it Kent Woods or is it Sharon?
Well, it's, yeah, I don't.
Who is it?
Sharon's the director.
Sharon's the, the.
So, it would be Sharon that would need to be talked to and discussed with, not Kent? Is that correct?
It's, it's between, it's.
They work together.
Yeah, it's kind of a group effort between them and the county commissioners, I guess, but.
I agree, I agree, I agree with, with John and guys that we need to have a plan in place. Because once we decided to set a threshold which what we're going to do, and this will kick the plan into action. And I, I, I believe the mayor's trying to get to that position where he can say, hey, we got a plan. Now we know, we know what's the threshold, when we're going to implement this plan. But also, when doing that, I would like to look at maybe compensate businesses who, as you said, we're going to have to put it back on the shoulders of the businesses, say, if we implement this, you're going to have to see that this is enforced, that those people do not come into your store unless they have the mask. But we need to compensate the businesses who comply with our ordinance and somehow compensate, because they will lose revenue. They're going to lose some kind of revenue, some people, I'm not going to shop here then. Well, somehow we need to give them a break on their utilities or something, something we can be creative with this, if that's a possibility. I don't know if something could be further discussed.
Through the CARES, the CARES money you're saying?
Yeah, exactly. To let them know that we're going to.
Sounds creative. It might be a possibility.
Yes.
You know, next week, like I said, we're meeting about possibly creating a, a unique ordinance to Fulton. And I don't know if it's not appropriate to have a couple of council members on board with that. It's going to be at 1:00 next Tuesday here at City Hall. And if we have a quorum, it kind of creates a, a different situation. But if we could get at least a couple, two or three of you that, that have the time to spend an hour or two, county health will be there as well. So, I think that'd be a great time to.
1:00 Tuesday.
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask for Kent and Sharon to attend our next council meeting as well?
I think they've been willing to attend anytime.
I'd, I'd like for them to come. I have some questions I'd like to talk to them about. Maybe we could do that?
Sure, I'll reach out to them.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, yep, appreciate it. John, did you have anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay.
That wasn't enough.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me take back some of your time also, John.
Councilman Washington?
Yes, eventually I want to get on, get back on board on abandoned houses and, and those things that we need to try to see if we can get some traction on that, so if we can get back on it. And Mr. Johnson gave me the name of the person I need to talk to and see if we can get some contacts.
I'll tell you what, one went down today, sir.
I'll see.
On Sixth Street.
I went by and I saw that. Thank you.
Yep, so, yeah, we'll, we'll try to continue to work on that and bring that back, maybe for a work session coming up.
Well, I'm going to do some homework. I'm going to go out and do some legwork and try to get, see if I can get some names and stuff and start contacting some of these people.
Excellent, appreciate that. Okay, Councilwoman, face note?
Yeah, I have nothing at this time.
Alrighty, very good. Okay, moving forward, resolutions. We do not have any tonight, so we'll scoot on to ordinances. Councilwoman Sebacher, if you would present Bill Number 1585?
Yes, sir. Bill Number 1585, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to approve Platte IV for Willow Creek subdivision. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1585 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? I believe this is down by the movie theater. Just an extension of what's already gone on down there? Very good, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. That'll move on. And Council, Councilman Simmons, if you would present Bill Number 1586?
Yes, sir. Bill Number 1586, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to an option and land lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC of Delaware pertaining to a communications facility located at 804 Bravo Morningside Drive in Fulton, Missouri. I make a motion that we advance Bill Number 1586 to second reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very good, have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Probably, I bet it's getting close to three years ago. The cell tower guy came to City Hall and met with Daryl. And Daryl and I went out, I can't remember if anybody else was there. I think, were you out there for a while with us? We took Richard with us. Um, they want to put another cell tower in town. They want to increase, increase coverage and, and it might have something to do with 5G. I'm not going to, I just kind of, but they're looking for increased capacity. Uh, they started out wanting to put it in the corner of Veterans Park. They said, no, ain't going to happen. And then they said, well, we're going to go get ahold of the, get ahold of some other property owners in the area and put it, try to put it in somebody's backyard. And I said, no, that's not going to happen. So, I said, well, where do you want us to put it? That came out wrong. And we said, we took them back in the Morningside Storage Area. You, you, are you familiar with that spot back there by the, by the salt shed? Yep. And they were going to go do some studies and try to figure out if that was, if that was going to work for them. Seven months later, they come back and say, yeah, we think that's going to work for us. So, they start talking about what they want to do. And then they, they came, they brought surveyors to town and we stepped it off and put flags up and spent two hours out there getting it all figured out. And then seven months later, they came back to town and said, well, that's not going to work for us, we need to move it. 25 feet. It's like, oh, fine, I don't care. And then they wanted to do this lease for the property, but that's a 105-acre piece of property. And based on the lease that they wanted, they wanted to be able to basically tie the whole thing up. It was like, no, that ain't going to happen. So, we got with Richard and they went out and put some more flags up and put some more stakes, did a survey, and broke this piece of property off of the 105 acres. So, now it's a standalone piece of property of, of, I don't know, maybe one, one and a half acres. With price, maybe, maybe that's too, not even that big. And got everything down really nice and fine and dandy. And another six or seven months passed and finally they got ahold of, every time that they, they got the urge, it was very urgent. But until they got the urge, there was no discussion that took place at all. So, based on that, it's been a very lengthy discussion. Mr. Riley has been very involved in it for the past couple of months in getting some of the details down. But probably the most significant thing you guys will care about is on page three. For this small piece of, small piece of property, we're going to get $14,000 a year for the first five, per year for the first five-year term. And then it's going to go up 2% each five-year term after that. And there are, there are going to be nine renewals for a total of 50 years. At least, they started out that they wanted 18 renewals. And I said, no, no, it's, and I said, I don't even know if the city council can do something for, you know, close to 100 years. So, we took it down to nine. So, it's, now it's five, 50 years. So, does anybody have any questions on this? There's going to be, if you guys agree with this, there will be a new cell tower going up back, hidden as much as possible in the Morningside Storage Area.
The, the rental agreement. It says in year two of the initial term and each year thereafter, the rent increases by 2%, which was different than what you told, than what you said. So, was I reading it wrong? This is for Bravo. I mean, I'm happy with.
I like, I like the way it reads. It is not the way I was going to understand it.
Okay. And then if for some reason they want to cancel.
So, no, wait, the initial term is five years.
In year two of the initial term. Yes.
Yep.
That's correct. In year two of the initial term.
So, not term two, but year two of the initial term. So, we'll get a 2% raise every year?
We'll have an answer on that by next council meeting.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm happy with it.
I, I am too.
And then either of us has a, a 30-day out?
I'm sorry?
Either party has a 30-day out with written notice?
After they build the tower?
That's my question.
No. Basically, if they build it, it's going to be very difficult for the city to get out, get out of it.
Okay, so, if they, if they build the tower and we sign, or we go at five-year increments and the third term in, 15 years in, they decide they don't want to use that tower anymore and we don't sign another agreement? Do they, and I did not read the whole entire thing. I, I looked at bits and pieces of it. Do they tear the tower down?
They're supposed to, yeah.
And remove the tower and put it back to its original?
Except for some of the underground improvements that they made.
So, I guess, Mr. Johnson, if you could, if you can clarify Six Alpha, it does state on page four, agreement may be terminated without penalty or further liability by either party on 30-day notice?
I'll read through it more too.
See, this is just the option, and maybe this is the option, not the, this is the lease.
It's the lease.
I'm.
That does seem crazy.
We, but we do need to make sure that future council has the opportunity to terminate this lease. I, I do not believe we should be signing a lease that puts the, the city at absolute for the next 50 years. And the way I read Six Alpha on page four, we've got a 30-day written notice by either party.
Okay.
Which I would agree to. That's what I believe we should have.
Okay, so, we'll get a little bit of clarification by next meeting on that. Are there any other questions? Yes?
Quick question, who runs the utilities? Are we running the power supply or are they paying for it? We are, okay.
All right. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Moving on to our final item of the evening is announcements. Our next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, August 25th at 6:30.
Mr. Mayor, for the purposes of next Tuesday, when do we need RSPP for, just in case it is a quorum?
I would say I post everything the Friday prior, so if you could let me know by this Thursday, Thursday, at the end of the day, that would be ideal, just so that way I can get a posting at our normal time. Otherwise, I definitely need to know by Monday, because we have to give 24-hour notice if there are more than four of you.
Thank you very much.
If it makes it any easier, Jeff, I would be able to be there.
Yeah, it's going to be 1:00 to 2:30 is the planned time.
And I would not be able to make that next Tuesday if it makes it any easier for anybody else to make a decision.
Right on.
I'd love to be.
Well, if we just have some representation there, I think it'd be great, so.
I believe I'll be present, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. All right, well, just let me know on that. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I forgot, we don't have our guy.
All those in favor? All those in favor, say yes.
We're not here.
Yes.
Yes.